May 11, 2020. It is 5:32 PM by my watch and this meeting is called to order. Before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via their computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and/or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comments, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comment. Persons who wish, persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Item number two, roll call, please.
Councilmember Santiness.
Present.
Mayor Protem Koops.
Here.
Councilmember Dutton. Oh, I think he might be muted. Councilmember Dutton, are you there?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Mayor Garza.
Here. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Item number three, which is our recessed close session, but before that, Mr. Stewart.
I'm just going to read the open items. So, public comments. I don't have the original on my page. This is set aside for public to address city council matters listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak in the item must come to the podium and state your name. For the record, you'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
Mayor, Deputy City Clerk, do we have anybody from the audience wishing to make any comments regarding our closed session items?
Mayor, there is no one in the public at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for that. Are there any recuses or conflicts for any of my council colleagues? All right, so hearing none. Actually, I skipped over something. So, by the hearing none, it is 5:34 by my watch and we will recess to close session. So, we were now recessed to close session. Public participation is not allowed during closed session. The virtual meeting will remain open during the pendency of the closed session. Upon concluding, we will resume the open session and announce any reportable actions from closed session at that time. So with that, we will recess to close session. Thank you.
Mayor, point of order, we need to disclose the closed session items.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So, Mrs. Stewart, I'm not sure if you have them before you.
I do. Yeah, so we have two items for closed session tonight. First is conference of real property negotiator. The property is 9030 Somerset Boulevard. The second item is conference of legal counsel existing litigation. And it is the Cal American Water Company decision to purchase Bellflower municipal water system assets related to purpose.
Great. So, we have both items. Thank you, Councilmember Santiness. Okay, so with that, any other comments before we go to closed session? So, hearing none, then it is 5:35 by my watch and we'll recess to closed session. Thank you.
Do you have a phone number for that one?
Mayor, we don't need to lag off, right?
We're going to keep the meeting open, but since you'll be on the closed session line, make sure that you are muted and your video is off.
I am, so is I.
Regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council. It is Monday, May 11, 2020. It is 7:00 PM by my watch and I am reconvening this meeting for open session. A reportable action. While not legally required, the city council is reporting the following action from closed session. The city manager and city attorney are directed to develop alternatives to separate the existing water system from the city's operational control. Those alternatives may, without limitation, be incorporated into the existing purchase and sell agreement with CalM. Be part of the pending application before the CPUC, the California Public Utilities Commission, including surplusing the system and selling the water rights, or take an emergency action to immediately divest itself of the system during the COVID-19 emergency. These latter actions will be undertaken in accordance with the city's emergency and police powers and are completely outside the jurisdiction of the California Public Utilities Commission. To consider such matters, the council is scheduling a closed session for the next regular meeting. So with that, I am calling the meeting order. And before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via their computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and/or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comments, your audio will be muted and your video will be... Persons wishing to be audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comments. Persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from entering from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. All right, item number six, roll call, please.
Councilmember Santiness.
Present.
Mayor Protem Koops.
Here.
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Mayor Garza.
Here. Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. Tonight's invocation will be shared with us and led by Councilmember Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor Garza. Please bow your heads. Oh, Lord, we thank you for letting us meet here tonight with technology to help fend off the COVID-19 pandemic. During these times, we trust you to help to pull us through these uncertain times. As we discuss these items before us here tonight, give us the wisdom to make the best possible decisions for a greater community. In closing, Lord, let us all be strong and be with the people and families that need you, that have sick ones. I ask for your special blessings for past Mayor Jim Edwards and his family, and also special blessings and prayers for the Randy Baumgart's and his family while in the hospital. Again, Lord, thank you for being there, and in your name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Ray Dutton. Item number eight, city council announcements. So, let me start off with mine. So, the Bellflower parking structure, where some of you maybe have noticed, but the Bellflower parking structure, the new traffic signal and street scrape work at Main Street and Bellflower Boulevard is complete. In an effort to assist Bellflower's business community, a 278 space parking structure has been constructed and is open. The structure features a new smart park system to help those looking for spaces know how many are available and on what level. Parking is free to the public, and I'm sure you'll agree, it'll be a great addition to downtown Bellflower. Let's move on to Mayor Protem Dan Koops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you are operating or ready to reopen your Bellflower business, the Economic Development Department is here to help. Our staff is available for questions related to reopening measures and are also helping by offering sidewalk decals, window clings to remind customers of social distancing requirements. So, to reserve your free decals and clings, you can call 562-804-1424, extension 2249. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem Koops. Councilmember Santiness.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Service Core of Retired Executives, also known as CORE, S-C-O-R-E, is offering small business training workshops online. It's a great opportunity for small business owners and operators to learn new skills, especially at this time, to help them reopen their business. For example, tomorrow's topic is Instagram for Business, which helps teach how to create share-worthy images and video. To register for any of their upcoming workshops, please visit orangecounty.score.org. That's all. Hi, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Santiness. Councilmember Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor Garza. The city of Bellflower manages four blue kiosks on Bellflower Boulevard at the intersection of Belmont Street in the heart of downtown. These units operate under the city's Small Business Program and feature four unique entrepreneurs, including an old-school shoe sign, a French-inspired book seller, a feel-good fashionista, and a men's grooming expert. While these businesses have been closed due to the COVID-19, the city has taken this opportunity to repaint and freshen up the look of these kiosks. They are now looking great and will begin to softly reopen for business with the proper COVID-19 guidelines. This is things wearing cloth facial coverings and sanitizing regularly. Please patron these businesses and help them out when we can. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Ray Dutton. Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The Fair Housing Foundation is continuing to provide opportunities to meet with a housing counselor every Wednesday. If you are a tenant, landlord, owner, manager, or broker and have questions about housing issues, also accommodate or notices, call 800-446-3247 and that'd be extension 1111. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Raymond Hamada. So, that was item 8A. So, now we'll move on to item 8B. And so, we're going to take item 8B, 8C, 8D, and 8E in succession right now. Item 8B. I would like to proclaim May 17 through May 23 as National Public Works Week. The year 2020 marks the 60th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. It's not just this week, but every week that we appreciate our public work staff and all they do for our community. Our public works professional focus on the infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Bellflower. Therefore, I, Long Garza, do hereby designate of May 17 through May 23, 2020, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Item 8C. Next, I would like to proclaim May as Mental Health Awareness Month. As LA County works with communities everywhere to weather the crisis, the Department of Mental Health announced two initiatives. The first initiative is We Rise 2020, and the second initiative is called Headspace. We Rise is a virtual lifelong spotlight on mental health, well-being, and healing through arts, music, and creative expression. To access We Rise 2020, please visit www.werise.la. Headspace, the second initiative, is a mindfulness and meditation app that is free to all LA County residents. The app includes hundreds of science-backed guided meditations in English and Spanish, as well as mindfulness and sleep exercises to help address rising stress and anxiety. To sign up for a free Headspace plus subscription, please visit www headspace.com/LACounty. And I think considering the stresses that we're all undergoing at the moment with COVID-19, I think it's absolutely appropriate for us to recognize Mental Health Awareness Month this month. So therefore, I, Long Garza, Mayor of the city of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim May 2020 as Mental Health Awareness Month. And item 8D, we would also like to proclaim May as Asian-American and Pacific Islander Month. The Asian-American and Pacific Islander populations are comprised of many languages and ethnicities, contributing to the celebrated diversity of Bellflower in our nation. Bellflower residents are encouraged to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Therefore, I, Long Garza, Mayor of the city of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim May 2020 as Asian-American and Pacific Islander Month. And I also want to echo that all these proclamations are signed by the city council of the city of Bellflower on behalf of our city. And last but not least, item 8E. I would like to announce a certificate of recognition from the city council to Lieutenant Milliman of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. My council colleagues and I would like to take a moment to recognize Lieutenant Milliman for his exceptional service to the city of Bellflower from 2011 to 2020. By far, the longest-serving area lieutenant for us here in Bellflower. There has been some restructuring at the sheriff's department, and although Lieutenant Milliman is not retiring, he will no longer unfortunately be here in the city of Bellflower. We want to thank him for his exceptional leadership and dedicated service over the last nine years. And so with that, I'd like to open it up for comments from my council colleagues. Why don't we start with Mayor Protem Koops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I'd like to make sure that anyone that's listening knows how much we have appreciated Lieutenant Milliman's good service to our city. I mean, having been here this long, he knew all of us. He knew the previous council. He knows all of us by name. He comes to every street fest. I see him at the movie nights. He's just an active part of our community. And one of the things that was really special was when we had Councilmember Schnoblegger's illness become very severe with kidney failure. Tim's wife had undergone dialysis and a kidney transplant. And he counseled with Ron Schnoblegger quite often, told him what was going to happen and how it would go, and gave him a lot of confidence on to face some of the maladies that he did. And I want to recognize that he was just more than a lieutenant in our community. He was a friend to all of us as council people, and he reached out to us and made our lives better and indeed made the city of Bellflower better. Thank you for your service, Tim. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem Koops. Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, let's see, hey, LT. Again, it's been an honor and pleasure to work with you. And I know that there's been a lot happening, and I know that you've always been there for us and always, again, always good to always catch up with you. Whenever I can see you around town or at the substation. I was trying to catch up with you the last few days last week, and I know you were really busy finishing all the adjustments and everything else that you had to wrap up before you move over to Lakewood. But, Tim, again, don't be a stranger, and always feel you are a part of Team Bellflower. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor. And I can't say enough about the lieutenant, our longest lieutenant we've had. And there's a little story there, the reason he is the longest. And at one time, he wasn't going to be the longest. And each time, it seemed that the lieutenant would get relocated or talk about it, we would come to grips and make phone calls and have a temper tantrum or two. And then finally, we would have the lieutenant continue his service with us. And on more than one occasion, I really, when I think of the lieutenant, Milliman is, like Councilman Koop said, there's a connection between him and Ron Schnoblegger, our past council member, and with the illnesses that Ron had and the lieutenant shared with his wife. But nothing but kind-hearted, and I think at one point, when Ron got on the council, lieutenant was going to be gone, and Ron, you know, he went up there, went up the chain, the ladder of command, and got him to stay. And with that said, it's how the lieutenant lasted the longest of all the lieutenants we've had, because Bellflower turns into a training ground. For whatever reason, we have the right atmosphere, I guess, I would say, for a training ground. And that's why we go through, in the past, a lot of lieutenants. And Lieutenant Milliman's going to be missed. I'm going to miss him. He's a kind, him in the room, you would always know that it was a sense of happiness and a sense of security, and just things was going well. And I can't imagine him, I've never seen him have a bad day. He hit it well. But with that, he will be missed. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Ray Dutton. Councilmember Santiness.
Thank you, Mayor. What more can I add? I think a lot of things have been said about Lieutenant, and I just want to add a little to that. He epitomizes community policing. And somebody mentioned about him being active in our events, city events. And not only him, he would also bring his lovely wife and his daughter to those events. So, to me, that is feeling that he's being part of the community. So, I really appreciate that. And if Tim is listening, please convey that to your family. And the other thing that I want to mention is, in my ride-alongs on the Fourth of July fireworks, he's always there. So, and that's something that I will miss, because I know that we will not get a lieutenant anymore in the substation. So, I will miss the ride-along with him on the Fourth of July fireworks event. So with that, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Santiness. It's hard to, everything really, really has been said. I think of all the council members, I probably know Lieutenant Milliman the least, because I've been on the council, I think, less than everyone here. But I remember the first time that I, that's what struck me about Lieutenant Milliman when I first met him, was just his smile. It was just really nice smile, really engaging, really caring. And it just, you know, sometimes when you have law enforcement personnel, that's hard to have. And I just, it just was really refreshing. And then to what was said before by some of my council colleagues, it struck me a lot that when I, when seeing him and his family coming to our annual car show. You know, a lot of people, the last place they want to be at when they have their time off is back at work. And the fact that he not only came back to Bellflower on his time off, but brought his family really said a lot. And so, it just struck me a lot, and it just lasted with me since the day I met him. I just always found him to be a true professional. He always had a nice way of balancing that professionalism with care. And again, I just thank you so much, Lieutenant Milliman, for your service to our city. You will be missed, but I think you leave a very solid and very impressive legacy in our city. So again, thank you so much for your service to our community, and we look forward to working with you in your new role in the Sheriff's Station. So with that, thank you so much. All right, gentlemen, thank you so much for that. So let's move on to item number nine, which is public comments. Mr. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council. Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an agenda item must utilize one of three methods listed on page two of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the city council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on the agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Stewart. Before we proceed, let me announce this. If you would like to speak, please use a raised hand feature under the Participants tab, or if by telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand. You will be called upon by the deputy city clerk in the order received. Your microphone will be then unmuted so that you can provide your comments. So with that, Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to make public comments this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I do see a couple of raised hands. The first one that I saw was Mr. Jason Barnett. And, Mr. Barnett, I will unmute your microphone at this time, and you will be allowed three minutes for public comments.
Mr. Barnett, welcome.
Hi, thank you for letting me join. I thank you for everything you guys are doing right now. You know, we're in uncharted territory, and I see you guys stepping up in a lot of ways, and I really appreciate it. And for good soil, we are, we're still working through, because we're essential workers, but we've taken the place of using mask, hand sanitizer, and wiping down all of our equipment on a regular basis. Business has changed a little bit through this pandemic. Commercial properties have kind of went down for all the closed businesses. They're doing like once-a-month service instead of every week. So we have been shifting more towards residential, just to keep going and keep helping out and hiring individuals that need to get back to work. We just hired two new Bellflower residents this week, and we definitely believe that the community is stronger when we're together. So we've been volunteering with the Quonos Club and YMCA doing the food distribution at the Nutrition Center four days out of the week. And we just, we're thankful for having a city that's really strong and trying to help everybody get through this. And I just wanted to give you a little update and say thank you for all you guys do.
Thank you so much, Mr. Barnett, for that. We really appreciate it. It's always an honor to have you join us. Okay, Madam Deputy City Clerk.
Yes, the next speaker is Victor Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez, if you'll give me just a moment to get the timer up on the screen. Go ahead, Mr. Sanchez.
Hi, good evening, honorable mayor, city council member staff, and fellow Bufforeans. My name is Victor Sanchez, lifelong resident of Bellflower. I hope you're all doing well and have been able to establish a new norm. First off, I'd like to thank you all on behalf of Community Family Guidance Center for declaring May Mental Health Awareness Month. That is an agency that I represent and work for. It is a great agency providing children mental health services here in Bellflower, Downey, Norwalk, and other surrounding cities. Secondly, I'd like to share with you all something great that is developing in our city. What started between myself and a few other neighbors as originally a cookout has developed into what we are calling a Bellflower Day of Unity. The idea on this day, what we are calling the Bellflower Day of Unity, which we're hosting, or we want to host on May 30, is a day where Bufforeans join together by spending time on their own front yards, cooking, playing, and relaxing, while adhering to social distancing guidelines. Our goal will be to encourage as many Bufforeans to enjoy their own activities on their own front yard at the same time as their neighbors, with the intent of raising spirit and awareness for social distancing and our great Bufforian pride. Again, the event that we are hoping to get together here is going to be on Saturday, May 30, in your front yard, and the time will be 2:00 to 6:00 PM. Lastly, several business owners are working to participate with us in and providing discounts on the day dedicated to raising spirit of our Bellflower neighbors. Again, just want to share that with you, and I'm open for any questions. Thank you, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you so much, Chairman Sanchez, for sharing that with us. I'm not sure if there's any questions from any of my colleagues on the council regarding his event. So, hearing none, I'm sure we'll get information from you, and that's exciting. And thank you so much for sharing that with us. Again, Chairman Sanchez.
Thank you, Tigger.
Thank you, Madam Deputy City Clerk. Do we have any other members of the public wishing to make comments this evening?
Mayor, I don't see any others at this time.
So, great. With that... With that, thank you again for your help, Madam Deputy City Clerk. Let's move on to item number 10, which is public hearings. We have none. Item number 11, ordinances. Item 11A, Mr. Stewart.
Jeff, you're muted, let me unmute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, this is consideration of possible action to, one, adopt urgency ordinance number 1388, an uncodified urgency ordinance authorizing digital and electronic signatures for official city documents, and to read by title only, waive further reading, introduce ordinance number 1389, an ordinance authorizing digital electronic signatures for official city documents.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Stewart. I believe we have a staffer present.
Yeah, Mr. Berger, or is it the clerk?
Well, technically, it comes from the clerk's office, so I'll defer to Myra.
Okay.
I just have a quick, a few verbal comments here, thank you. This has been a bit of a housekeeping item in order to facilitate the timely processing of documents while also adhering to state and county requirements for physical distancing. The City Attorney's Office prepared the urgency and regular ordinances, which if approved, would authorize digital and electronic signatures for all city documents, such as ordinances, resolutions, and agreements, by providing specific standards to utilize when processing these types of documents. We're currently researching available software to find a solution that meets the regulations set by applicable law, and that will also help our process without overcomplicating it. The recommendation is to adopt the urgency ordinance number 1388 upon a four-fifths vote, to take effect immediately, and read by title only, waive further reading, and introduce ordinance 1389. And the City Attorney and I are available for questions.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk and Mr. City Attorney. Let's start off with the questions from my colleagues on the council, Mayor Proton Coops.
No, it seems pretty straightforward. We just need to keep up with the times there and do electronic signatures. I'll all for it, I have no questions.
Thank you so much, Mayor Proton. Councilmember Sunny Santinas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to the City Clerk for bringing this forward. It's been, I think this process has been around for quite some time, especially in the real estate business, and I'm glad that she's bringing it forward. I just have a couple of questions. Have you heard of any kind of objection or something like, it did not work in some instances? Because I'm assuming that the way to basically circumvent the process is by having someone have access to an email. That's my assumption, because I've signed documents using this process, and it's done by my email address. That's number one question. And then, number two is, if we adopt this resolution today, ordinance today, including the urgency ordinance, there's a, there's a way mentioned in the staff report saying that, following the termination of the emergency, the City Manager and City Clerk may recommend changes to these protocols, including codification within the Bellflower Municipal Code. So would that be the only reason why it would be codified after the emergency? Or will this be something that is ongoing?
For the first question, yes, we have been kind of working around the system, so to speak, using email and trying to get documents signed in the meantime. I believe this will be a more formal way and more professional way to handle our documents for the time being. As to the codification afterwards, I think that's just left to be discussed, to see how this process goes. I am a fan of wet signatures, I am a little old school with that, but I am open, of course, to electronic signatures, especially in times like this. We have been automating our agreement signing process as well, so this is something that would definitely benefit that process beyond the emergency.
And then, one more question, just like I'm a fan of wet signature. So if I were to sign the document, do I have the option to sign, to sign it actually, or to adopt to a electronic signature?
Oh, yes, wet signature is always an option, and by me, always preferred. So the electronic signature is for ease of access.
Okay, very good, thank you so much. And again, thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Santinas. Councilmember Ray Dutton?
I just got both of my questions answered by Sunny and Myra. Thank you so much. I was dead on gonna ask, can we use both, wet and electronic? And wet is preferred by myself also, and this is a good learning experience to see if we want to go down the road of electronic signatures. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Dutton. Councilmember Raymond Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, thank you, Myra, for moving this forward, and again, thank you, Carl, for the input. Looks like it's a sign of the times that helping push this. So things are happening, as I mentioned like earlier, daily sometimes, and we don't know what's, you know, actually coming up, and sometimes time is of the essence. So I go both ways with either wet or electronic. If I need to get something done fast, it's electronic. Otherwise, I'd sign, sign something, mail it, and you know, so on and so on. So I think it's good, and we should move forward in one of the stated paths. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hamada. And then for myself, again, then, Myra and Jeff, thank you, I mean, Carl, thank you for bringing this forward. In the interest of kind of setting the example, I have not had a wet signature in at least a couple months, right, Myra? But I am also looking forward to the day when I can start doing wet signatures again, but I, again, thank you for bringing this forward. I've used Adobe, I've used DocuSign, all of that, but again, I'm looking forward to when we can go back to wet signatures. With that, let me open it up now to any public comments. Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have anybody that's wishing to make any public comments regarding item 11A?
Mayor, I'm not seeing anyone at this time.
Thank you so much, Madam Deputy City Clerk. Okay, so with that, any final comments or questions, gentlemen, before we call for a motion? Okay, so hearing none, is there anybody that would like to make a motion regarding item 11A?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay, I think I had a Councilmember Hamada come in, right?
I will turn it over to the other Ray.
Doesn't matter.
I was about to, but Ray, Ray, go ahead.
I'd like to make motion, adopt urgency ordinance number 1388, and if it's a four-fifths vote, I will like to tie in, read by title only, and waive further reading, and introduce ordinance number 1389, if the Attorney will let us.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, it's second by Councilmember Hamada. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Santinas?
Hi.
Mayor Proton Coops?
Hi.
Councilmember Dutton?
Hi.
Councilmember Hamada?
Hi.
Mayor Garza?
Hi. Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk, and let's move on to item 12, which is consideration item. First off, item 12A, Mr. Stewart?
Hi, consideration of possible action to provide staff direction related to a recommended plan of action for summer 2020 special events and beyond, related to the COVID-19 pandemic. And Mr. Milano is on board tonight to make a presentation in the City Council.
Thank you so much, Mr. Stewart, Mr. Milano.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. If I can ask the City Clerk to allow me to share my screen? Okay. And can everyone see my screen okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. This evening, I'll be presenting a proposed response and plan for the city's 2020 summer events and beyond. This presentation is in response to the realities we are facing with restrictions and mandates related to the COVID-19 public health crisis, and how events need to be evaluated and planned for if restrictions are lifted. The key areas that we are monitoring closely include public health orders, social distancing, and mass gathering restrictions. We are also looking at event timing, scheduling, and logistical considerations, such as staffing, security, and funding. So our big challenge is that our city events are designed to encourage an environment of social gathering and interaction amongst community members. But social distancing restrictions related to the COVID-19 health crisis put significant limits on mass gatherings. The response to the COVID-19 health emergency is very fluid, and though we are beginning to see the opening of businesses and the economy in phases, from what we are hearing, the realities of restrictions being lifted on events like the city's are not likely anytime soon. Within the past few weeks, we've heard the following from the governor and his team. Quote, "The prospect of mass gatherings is negligible at best until we get to herd immunity and we get a vaccine." So large-scale events that bring in hundreds, thousands, tens of thousands of strangers is not in the cards based upon our current guidelines and current expectations." Unquote. Concerts and large events fall into stage four of California's new four-stage plan to reopen the economy, and we are far from stage four, as it would require therapeutics to be in place according to the plan. But if events are permitted, we do have a plan of action. So first, we have some schedule considerations, and our recommendation is to cancel the original eight-week slate of events scheduled for June 19th through August 14th. Typically, this would have included alternating between a weekly street fest and a biweekly street fest and a biweekly movie night. We are, staff is recommending a tentative replacement schedule with an alternate condensed slate of events. The tentative schedule would need to start no earlier than July 30th. This would allow staff time to mobilize, book entertainment, schedule staff and security, and assess feasibility of social distancing and public health requirements. The proposed schedule, as you can see on the slide, would not include movie nights. Concert times have also been reduced by one hour. Additionally, the schedule allows for flexibility for the City Council to provide direction on offering anywhere from one to four events, or one to four concerts. It's also worth noting that Bellflower Unified School District is tentatively scheduled to begin on August 13th. Also, with regard to scheduling, we are recommending that the City Council actually defer their final decision on this schedule. As restrictions are changing daily, we feel this plan allows staff to defer that decision to the June 22nd City Council meeting, and that gives us still time to plan if indeed we were allowed to do events at that time. Next would be our change of format and different kind of scope of a street fest event if we were to do something with this limited schedule. If permitted to host the events, the city, if the city does decide to do so, staff is recommending the following. Limited options for gathering areas. This would include having a music concert only. Eliminate any vendors, whether that be food or craft vendors. Eliminate any extra youth activities, youth areas, including BRIM or Arts and Crafts. Eliminate any info booths and other supplemental aspects. And the reason we would want to eliminate those is those areas are bottlenecks at the event, and they are gathering places where people would be gathering. So if we were to chance it and have the opportunity to bring back events, we would want to limit those gathering areas. We would restrict our sidewalks to be only used as pedestrian through traffic only, no stationary gathering, as we've seen at the street fests and different type events. We would then develop and designate a, some family, what we're calling family gathering areas, and I'll go a little more in detail on those in the next few slides. And in addition to the family gathering areas, we would create some additional stationary areas where those would be designated throughout the event. And again, I'll go over those here on the next few slides. Also, for signage, we would have prominent signage displayed throughout the event, noting the social distancing and public health guidelines attendees must adhere to. Specifics on these items would come at a later time when we know more from the county. So this would include whether masks would be required, recommended, or not part of those requirements. We just don't know at this point, but we would, once we would have that information, we would make sure that is in all of our marketing pieces for the event, as well as all of the signage. We would take different measures to protect staff and volunteers. They would be equipped with masks and other personal protective equipment, if so required, as well as sanitizing and cleaning supplies. For staff and security, our recreation leaders would be responsible for coordinating the assigned areas and supervising the entry and exit points, and providing general customer service. Our private security, as well as Los Angeles Sheriff's Department deputies, would be responsible for enforcing the social distancing requirements and keeping the sidewalks clear from stationary gatherings and managing the flow of pedestrian traffic. We'd also take measures to increase sanitation. Hand washing or sanitizing stations will most likely be mandated, a mandated requirement, and would either be rented or purchased. The additional stationary areas created would include standing-only cocktail tables provided for outdoor dining. These areas would be the only stationary, stationary areas where food would be permitted outside of the restaurants. The dining tables would be spaced a minimum of six feet apart, and staff would thoroughly clean and sanitize each table between uses. So I want to give some perspective on the, over the next few slides, some visuals and perspective on the family and stationary gathering areas. So this is an overview of our downtown area where we host our events. To the left of your, of the slide, you'll see our stage area, and that's where Steelcraft is. You can see where Pirate Park and Belmont Court is. And then we have the intersection at Belmont and Bellflower, just to give us a little bit of perspective of our street fest events. So the family gathering area would be this, this yellow area here, and this would be fenced off with 10 by 10 areas separated by chalk. Two to six individuals could go into those areas. Those two to six individuals would have to be family members. Designated spaces would be created from Oak Street all the way to the Friendship Square, which is where the Christmas tree is, so that whole area. The additional stationary areas is this green section, and this is where we would put general tables up. This would not be fenced off. This would be more kind of come, come and go as you please. If you have food, you could, with whoever you're with, you could sit at that table, eat your food, and then dispose of your trash, and staff would be in this area, almost like a waitstaff that would be there, and they would sanitize the tables in between uses. The capacity of the yellow family gathering area would be between 144 individuals and 432 individuals. 144 would be if we had two individuals per 10-foot space, and 432 would be six individuals per space. This is just a close-up of what the family gathering areas would look like, a small section of it. You see the 10 by 10 spaces, the stage area. Steelcraft would be up here, we would have walkways, and then staff would allow people in with wristbands, and there would be clearly designated exits and entries to this area. We would not, we do not anticipate allowing any food in this area, just we want to keep that in designated areas. And patrons that did reserve these spots would be encouraged to bring their lawn chairs, as they do for street fest events. And this would, the total length of the family gathering area and the total spaces that would be available to reserve those 10 by 10 areas. And it goes from Oak Street, as I mentioned, all the way close to where the dentist office is by the Christmas tree. dentist office is by the Christmas tree. So also part of our plan of action is the finance, financial impact and considerations. By canceling the current slate of events for fiscal year 1920, our current fiscal year, the savings will be $19,825. Each street fest event typically costs $12,000 to produce. Each movie night costs about $2,500 to produce. We are also recommending that any budget that is in the 2021 budget year, any action on that budget as far as cuts or determining how that budget is to be utilized, we're requesting that no matter the case be for this, these summer events, that the city council would defer action on any budgetary items until January 2021, just to give us some flexibility, depending on what the, the scope of future events are, or to also give us some flexibility. If, let's say we get through this in October, you want one concert in October rather than these ones here, we have some flexibility in that budget if we want to do something. And I think we'll have a much more clear idea as we get into January. So beyond summer, all considerations that have been presented for summer 2020 will need to be part of the discussion for upcoming city-sponsored and cosponsored events. This would include State of the City. Prior to that, we have the car show. We also have our Christmas tree lighting right, right around the corner. These events are just around the corner, and typically we're already in full planning mode for these events, but these type of considerations are going to need to come into play. This is the Bravo Awards. Again, any type of social distancing, distancing measures are going to reduce the capacity at these events. You're looking at probably a third capacity that we would be able to do under the current social distancing guidelines. So I just want to recap the special event plan of action. One would be to cancel the original eight-week slate of events, June 19th through August 14th. We would replace that with an alternate and tentative slate of events to start no earlier than July 30th and include only two-hour street fest concerts. We are recommending also to defer the final city council decision on the scheduling and plan of action to the June 22nd, 2020 city council meeting. So staff's recommendation to city councils to consider the proposed 2020 special events plan of action and provide direction to staff for moving forward, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Milan, a really, really nice, comprehensive report. Let's start off with questions from my colleagues. Mayor Proton Coops.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So PJ does, you indicated that you need quite a bit of lead time on preparing for things like Bravo and State of the City. How do you anticipate, you know, at this point in time, there's no option on having those events? But at the same time, you have to have four or five months preparatory. So how do you deal with that?
Well, like we're, like we are doing with the street fest, we have a very talented staff, and we will put something together within 30 days if it's a go. It may not be what we're used to, but we will put something together. So that's why we're trying to keep this open and very fluid, but we do want those events to be on the council's radar that they, they are here. And if we do choose to run those types of events, the format is definitely going to be different if these restrictions are not lifted completely.
So as you said, if we were to utilize the traditional way of having Bravo or State of the City, we couldn't accommodate but one-third of the amount of people that we, that we once had. Does that sound right?
I am anticipating that, yes. If you look at the chairs in the auditorium, you're looking at skipping two chairs for every person. The same would be at the tables, and I can, so here you're looking at, you know, at least a minimum of two people missing in between those individuals that are sitting arm to arm. And if we go back to State of the City, you're, you're probably looking at three people at this table rather than, there's six, and I think we, we can get up to eight at these tables, but you're probably looking at three people if you, if we need to keep that social distancing requirement. And I would think even more so when we're in an enclosed environment and for a longer period of time sitting, and, and that definitely has been one of the red flags that we're, we're hearing and that we are seeing as far as how this may be spreading as well.
Okay, but you can pull a rabbit out of a hat within 30 days notification on Bravo, State of the City, and Christmas tree lighting?
We've done it before, sir. It just may not, again, it, it, it may not be what we're used to, and we want to make sure the expectations are there of what we may be getting. And the other consideration that need, that you as city council need to make is, is it really worth it to do it at that lower level this time around? And, and that, and we will do whatever direction the city council would like to go. We, we will make it happen as a department.
Yeah, so that, that's, I didn't want to say it, but yeah, when does it get to the point where we say, well, we, it's not feasible to do these activities? We just wait and see, I guess.
Yes, and we would be, we would be happy, again, like I said, I intend to bring the summer events back to the June 22nd meeting, and if we need regular updates on this at the city council meetings for consideration, that is something we, we definitely can do moving forward and give a, a regular update.
No, I think that's important. I, I would ask the mayor to make sure you're included in every meeting we have because, you know, these are important to the city and they're important to the council, so we need to be able to make the right decision at the right time. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Proton Coops. I certainly have no problem with that. I think it's really important. So with that, let's move on to council member Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor. Where do I start? I think PJ's did an exceptional job with laying this out for us and with his PowerPoint. I think he's doing the right thing by coming up with a plan of action. And while you're flipping through the screens, can you get the Bellflower Boulevard stage on there for me? I'll get to that in a minute. Not being one that doesn't always agree with the, the way the states run and decisions that are made, it's like PJ said, it's too early to really tell how this is going to pan out in the next six months. With that said, the plan of action, he's going to be a, a semi blueprint that we can adjust if we go there. And PJ said a key thing, if we think it's worth it. We want to keep things on a certain level, and sometimes there's a point where, you know, it's, we can, we can roll it out in a low budget or nothing, and it's a dud, and it wasn't worth doing a dud, spending a lot of money on it. But a plan of action that he is developing that we can massage, it'll be a working document that we can adjust accordingly as rules, the state's rules loosen up. Let's hope they do. And let's hope that we get one set of guidelines instead of everybody telling us three ways how this is going to pan out. It's pretty confusing right now. But with that, with the, with the stage picture that you have here, PJ, put the ones up, what you have, the box seating? I think you're on to something here. The family 10 by 10 areas, you know, if we have to go down this road and we decided it works, this could be a blueprint for something like the Hollywood Bowl. We could put little vinyl fencing around all those boxes with an opening thing. People can bring their sack lunch, a bottle of wine, just like the Hollywood Bowl. Maybe we can elevate the second one back over the first and elevate the third one back. You know, that'd be kind of, kind of something in the future, wouldn't you think?
Yeah, that's definitely something that would be an interesting move to look at how we would implement that, and obviously costs would come into.
Well, of course, of course that. But I, I can't see keeping a family with some kids over chalked line, you know? I really, you know, I can see the chairs in there, whatever, and how it works, but you did a good idea planning this thing, and I just wanted to spoof on it and take it to a different level. Thank you for your presentation, and I totally understand the plan of action is needed, and that's how we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunn, and Councilmember Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this, the sign of the times here, and trying to look at some options, and definitely want to do something downtown, hopefully in, in, in the near future, and I'm all for shifting the, you know, the time schedule now, of course, just kind of wait and see how things go. Just a couple of things, and just, you know, this for future discussion with the logistics and so on, and in, in years, in, in the past here with street fests and, and the bands, I know that I'm hearing from people more and more that there are quality in-city bands and like individuals that may be able to perform. So some thought in, you know, looking at the slate of, you know, performers. Stretching it out in that, you know, linear fashion, you know, the further back, again, someone says it's tougher to hear, or, you know, they want to get closer and so on. So I'll see the, again, you've looked at the plan for security and so on, and fencing and exiting and so on, and, and, you know, entering. The other comment, I think in years past, we've heard from some of the other, you know, area local restaurants that would love to be a part of it. And I know a few of them are, you know, outside the, you know, the planned area. And again, looking at, at minimal, maybe some kind of advertising for those other restaurants that, again, saying that they're, that they're open, they're available for takeout food, you know, and, and it just helps market, you know, what's, what's downtown? You know, there'll be a lot of residents, but hopefully there'll be people outside from the city. So just to get to know the downtown. PJ, noticed in your plan, again, you know, measures to protect staff and volunteers, are we also still looking at requesting visitors to be masked?
That all would depend on what the health restrictions and health orders are at, at the time. If, if that, if that is the order, we would do something similar to what we just did with the trail reopening, and we would create signage, we would create guidelines that are consistent and follow the health order recommendations or the health order mandates as well. And that, that would apply to the community, and we would communicate that, and also communicate with the security guards and with the sheriff's department as far as enforcement goes.
Yeah, just also want to remind the public. So I think it's, it's, again, I believe in hope and that, you know, things can happen down the road here sooner than later, and, you know, let's still, you know, be around the planet out and not give up and, you know, look at, you know, the variations if need be to, to hopefully, you know, maximize it to the, to the extent possible and make it comfortable, of course, and, and, you know, make it, again, something memorable so that we can tell everybody out there that, you know, downtown is not the, you know, quiet and, and empty, but it, you know, things are happening again, so. Obviously, we'll be talking some more, so good luck with the planning, PJ. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Sunny Santez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, thank you, PJ, for continuing the plan, continuing the planning for these events. And I, for one, I affirm believe that we should not give up on, on these events unless we are prohibited to do it. Street Fest, I like the idea of postponing it until July 30th and ending sometime in August. So PJ, you have a question on that. In your recommendation, you're recommending that it will not start until July 30th, and you're giving the city council some flexibility and make the final decision until the second meeting in June. I'm assuming that you will start, if this plan is approved, I'm assuming that you was going to start booking the, the artists or the bands to perform in those events. Will that give you enough time to cancel in the event that we are not permitted to do, to do those events?
So if we get direction tonight to move forward with this plan, first thing tomorrow, we will finally give our formal notice to everyone that we have agreements with for the previously slated events, that we will give them notice that it is, those are officially canceled and we're resetting. We will then tentatively start reaching out and, and to entertainment. It may or may not be the same entertainment we had booked, depending on their availability, but we will look to enter into verbal agreements with them, but we will not sign any new agreements until June 23rd, moving forward, if we were to for sure have a go and move forward. Because we know that entertainment, same as with everyone else in the entire nation, is shut down, we don't feel that we're going to have an issue booking entertainment if we are, if we do have a go, whether it's the four we had booked now, or we have to reach out to others. We don't think there's, that's going to be an issue at all for us to book someone.
Okay, so you have plenty of flexibility in that case.
Yes.
All right, thank you. And then for the other events that you mentioned towards the latter part of the year, like the Bravo and the State of the City, you know, for me, Bravo is our signature event. And no matter what, my, my suggestion is, no matter what happens, I think we should continue to make, to recognize our first responders, our standing citizens, and also for the mayor to present the State of the City. No matter what happens, it's, I think what's going to matter only is the way it is presented. So for example, let's say if we are permitted to use, let's say, the, the main event center, the mayor should still do the State of the City via television or via Zoom and things like that. And the same thing with the Bravo awards, I still want to have this recognition, no matter what happens. It can be a limited recognition, it may not be at the at City Hall, but we need to continue the process of recognizing that. So I, I agree with the proposal from, from PJ to move forward with the recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Santez. I concur, I, and everything that you said and everyone else has said, you know, maintain that 2020, 2020, 2021 special and funding, and also, you know, adapting to the new schedule for now, and I think the milestone events that, Councilmember Santez, I think are absolutely crucial and important for their own distinct reasons, and I think we'll find a way, depending on what the restrictions are at that point in time, I think we can find a creative way of being able to continue them. So my one question that I had was regarding the mask use, and, and I know that Mr. Milan already responded to that, and I just want to commend PJ and his whole team. I think if there's been one area that's been really fluid, and it's not just from our staff here in City Hall, but in talking to other city managers and other staffs from other cities, it's been what's going to happen with, with summer festivities and schedules. And so, again, we, we have, we're lucky to have PJ and his team, and the fact that they're adapting so well and putting so much thought, really good thought into just having Plan A and Plan B in front of us for the benefit of our residents for the summer, I think is just a testament to how lucky we are to have them. So again, PJ and, and members of the Parson Rec Team, thank you for thinking outside the box and adapting so well to this flu situation. And so with that, I would like to open it up to see if our deputy C clerk has any comments from the public at this point in time.
Mayor, if I could give the public just a moment to use the feature?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Thank you so much, Madam Deputy City Clerk. Okay, so with that, any final questions or comments, colleagues from City Council? All right, hearing none, I will take a motion regarding item 12A. Would anybody like to make a motion regarding item 12A? So hearing none, I will make a motion regarding item 12B as proposed by staff. Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion myself, a second by Councilmember Hamada in roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanyas.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Koops.
Aye.
Member Dutton.
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada.
Aye.
Mayor Garza.
Aye.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Milan. Item 12B, Mr. Stewart.
This is a consideration of possible action to provide direction to the city manager regarding creation and implementation of a small business assistance program using community development block grant funds. And Mr. Delalanga is going to make the initial presentation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Stewart, Mr. Delalanga.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. Travis Seis and I are going to tag team this presentation and he's going to start it off and I'll turn it over to him and then I'll jump in later.
Thank you so much. Welcome, Mr. Seis.
Welcome, thank you, Mr. Delalanga and Mr. Stewart. Can everyone see the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. This item before you tonight is a consideration item to provide direction to the city manager regarding the creation and implementation of a small business assistance program using community development block grant funds, also known as CDBG funds. In an effort to assist the Bellflower small business community during these trying times, staff has identified an initial amount of $300,000 in unspent carryover CDBG funds which could be used for a small business assistance program. Originally set aside for the Coke Avenue Park project, however, that project was placed on hold and the funding was then reprogrammed to assist with the temporary shelter construction. However, since the contractor already began construction on the shelter, it was going to be difficult to comply with federal project regulations. Therefore, the funding was not used for the shelter construction. And with this funding, posing to grant eligible businesses up to $10,000 under a CDBG-funded small business assistance program. In order to qualify under CDBG guidelines, a business would need to meet one of the two criteria. They would either need to meet the low and moderate income requirement or the low and moderate income jobs requirement. In order to meet the low and moderate income area requirement, this must be located in a CDBG-eligible low and moderate income area and it also must serve that area. To meet the low and moderate income jobs requirements, at least 51% of the employees must have household incomes at no more than 80% of the area median income, which is defined by HUD, or the business must create new jobs for low and moderate income persons at no more than 80% of the area median income, which amounts to at least 51% of total employees at no more than 80% of the area median income. So this next slide shows the CDBG low and moderate areas of the city. The blue areas are the eligible areas. You'll see just over 50% of the city is in a CDBG-eligible areas. This next slide has a matrix which shows the 2020 HUD area median income limits. These limits to 80% of the area median income by household size. The numbers were recently updated by HUD and you will notice the larger the household size, the larger the income limit. As I mentioned earlier, under the low and moderate income jobs requirement, at least 51% of a business's employees must have household incomes at no more than 80% of the area median income or the business must create new jobs for low and moderate income persons at no more than 80% of the AMI, which would amount to the business having 51% of its total employees at or below the eligible HUD income limit. And now I'm going to hand over the presentation to Mr. Delalanga. He's going to go over the proposed program guidelines and parameters.
Thank you. And so now we look at what the city's eligibility criteria are. Once the business or applicant meets the CDBG guidelines that Travis just mentioned. So the eligibility guidelines that we would place, are proposing to place on a business would be that they must be a brick and mortar, commercial storefront business located within the city of Bellflower. They must have a current city business license. We're looking to help small businesses here, so we are looking at businesses that have 25 or fewer employees. The business must have been in operation for at least six months and we are not allowing residential or commercial landlords to participate in the program. So the rating parameters for this program, and these are flexible, we can look at adjusting these, would be that high-risk applicants is defined by the state of California and that has to deal with the pandemic that we're currently in. Business owner's statement of need would be part of the application. We would like to see that they're retaining or creating as much employment as possible and we'd like to see what their proposed use of funds are. So if they're using those funds to create jobs, to do things, to maintain social distancing in this weird climate that is causing excessive cost to the, the business, those are, those are things that we're looking at. And when I say high-risk applicants, that, that typically means those businesses that maybe come, may not be able to fully get on board until stage three of the, the governor's plan of reopening California. And a lot of those would be businesses that have dine-in and would not be able to, are not able to open their dine-in capabilities yet. So it's reduced their, their revenue significantly. Bars, nightclubs, nail and hair salons, barber shops and gyms. These are all those types of businesses that are stuck still predominantly closed or significantly closed as a result of the pandemic. Let's see of those. So that, that takes us to the next use, eligible uses of grant funds. So these can be, this can be working capital, overhead expenses, rent and utilities, business services to increase capacity and carry out business activities. We have labor expenses and equipment purchases necessary for the operation excluding vehicles. And that's a, that's a HUD requirement that you're not allowed to buy vehicles. Now, working capital is a large category, has a lot of subcategories and under that it includes payroll, labor costs, insurance premiums, potentially interest on loans associated with the business, food waste, spoilage. They have to make up for what they lost because of having to close down. Restart-up costs, as a lot of times that could be restocking inventory and restart-up cost for employee recruitment includes payroll and training, marketing and advertising and such. And all these things are what the business community is struggling with significantly right now. So the next steps that we envision, if council gives direction to staff to move on this, this evening, would be that we would have consideration of the program itself and the funding pursuant to our HUD regulations. And we would shoot for a May 26th consideration of that item. And then if approved, we'd open the application process shortly thereafter. We'd like to think we'd be in position to open it pretty quickly after approval of the program. And we would allow for a five-business-day application period in order to get the funds out as fast as possible. We are proposing at this time to review the first 50 applications received during the application period and that gives us the ability to have some backup applications if some are deemed ineligible to participate. If some of the applicants are ineligible, they're outside the area, they don't have the right employee demographics. And then we would review, rate and verify eligibility of the applications. And this could vary a little bit because as you can see, if somebody is in a CDBG project area shown on the map, that could go pretty quickly in verifying that location. If somebody is outside the area and has to, we have to verify the employees in the business and make sure that 51% of those employees are under 80% of the AMI, that could be a timely process in which we have to work with the business significantly to get all the income information for their employees and as Travis mentioned, the, the members of the family in that household because we're not, again, calculating the, the income of the worker him or herself, but we're calculating the income of the household. So we'll need to get all that data and backup in anticipation of a potential audit at that HUD does periodically on, on cities. They, they double check what we do, so we've got to have all that backup. So that could be 10 days, but it could be more, it could be less depending on the complexity of the application. Then we have the, then we would execute the agreement and disperse the funds. That could take around five business days and once the agreement is signed, we'll, we'll work with the finance department to get the checks out quickly within a week or so. And we've talked to the finance department about that already. So at this point, the recommendation is to direct the city manager to create and implement a small business assistance program funded by CDBG funds in a form consistent with CDBG regulations and approved by the city attorney or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. That concludes our report. We are here to answer any questions and we also have in the meeting Anna Lanu, who is our HUD and H, a CDBG consultant that we work with on all of our HUD and CDBG programs. And she's, and her team have been very helpful in us getting to this point with this project.
Thank you so much, Mr. Delalanga. So let's move on to questions from my colleagues on the city council. And let's start off with Councilmember Sanyas.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, thank you, Jim, for being this forward. I know that I can anticipate that a lot of our business owners would be needing assistance either from federal government, the state and from us. And I'm glad that we're able to set aside a portion of that money to help them out. So I have a couple of questions here. If we go ahead with this program, how, how do you plan on promoting this to our businesses?
Oh, we've got all of our avenues in which we typically use to promote any of our programs, even the previous city-sponsored business assistance program with city funds. We'd use our e-citizen newsletter. We'd reach out to the Chamber of Commerce to get this out using their mailing list. We've got all of our social media channels. I also have a list of business contacts from the COVID Business Impact Survey that the department did a few weeks ago. We have all of those, so I can also use that as a, a marketing tool. So we're going to use every marketing tool we have available to us at this point to get this, this word out.
Yeah, because the, if you, if you look at your timeline, it's very tight and I want to make sure that the business owners are informed about this. If you look at a five-day application process, you will advertise this from open this on May 28th and it's only five days. So I'm kind of concerned that it may not be sufficient time for them to, to know about the program unless we, unless you promote it earlier than that and to, is to fill out the application. So I, I hope that you can work it out somewhere to, to really promote this because I don't want to be in a situation where in business owners did not know about this.
Noted, we will, we'll, we'll take that under consideration and reformat our timing.
Okay, our second question is, is this a straight grant or is there any, any provision for repayment?
This is a straight grant with the CDBG funds. It's one of the easier ways and quicker ways to get this money out into the community where it's needed with, by the businesses. And it also reduces labor on the staff side of things to have to track forgivable loans over a course of time and, and, and at this number of businesses that will be getting it, it would be a significant drain on, on staff resources to have to track these things and, and follow up on them all the time to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do and get forgiven.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. With $10,000 and if there's any repayment, it's going to be, it's going to put a lot of burden on them and on us as a city. That's good, it's good to hear. Now, in terms of, in terms of timing, again, there are businesses that will not be allowed, are not allowed to open at this point. And based on this timetable, it looks like the money will be dispersed by, by June, seems like, right?
That's approximate, yeah, depending on, again, if we extend the application period, that may go out a little bit farther.
Now, assuming that the money is dispersed and let's say we have, we have more than, more than enough number of applicants who qualify and the money is dispersed, well, how about the businesses that are not allowed to open and right now and will be allowed later on? Will they have an opportunity to apply now and then get, and then spend the money later?
Well, they could because they could potentially, depending on the use of their funds, if they're going to make improvements to their business, that they may have to make some changes within the business to comply with future distancing requirements. For example, putting up plexiglass dividers or doing something where they have to rearrange the inside of their, their business location. They could apply because then they could do those improvements now while they are awaiting clearance to open. So there are opportunities for these businesses to apply now, get the, get the grant now even before they, I say now, but in, in a month and a half or so and, and be ready to open when it comes time to open so that it, it's entirely possible for them to do that. We envision that.
Okay, good, very good. Now, the grant will be, will be up to $10,000?
Correct.
Not, not the flat $10,000?
Well, the, I mean, we made it up to $10,000. So if somebody wants to take six or seven, that's what they need. They don't need the 10, they're welcome to take less, but it's up to $10,000.
Okay, now how about the number of, the number of grants? Is it going to be limited to 30?
Oh, it'll be 30 if every, that would be the minimum number if everybody took $10,000.
Okay, so as, as long as, as long as the $20,000 is invested in them, that would be good enough. So basically, what you're saying is up to $10,000 and as, as long as we have enough funds, we will give it out, whether it's 30, 35 or 40. If some applicants are requesting only less than, less than $10,000, we will, we will give that.
Oh, yes, well, we'll get out as much of it as we can and I anticipate it all going out.
Okay, very good, thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Sanyas. Councilmember Dunn.
Yes, okay. On that last note with, with one of my things, I'll go with the last note with the sunny brought up about the, up till $10,000. If you give out a grant that's up to $10,000, it's going to be $10,000 every time. I'm concerned if somebody needs only $5,000 or $6,000 and somebody needs $13,000. Is there a way to, to, in an application, to ask them what their needs are in the next 60 days to get started? And with a follow-up question to what I just said, is somebody that wants to reopen their business, you know, it's not just the funds to get it open, maybe you got to pay it back rent or you need inventory or if you're a restaurant, you have to buy food. When you initially reopen a business, been closed for several months, you're not going to have your regular gross profits that you're accustomed to with your utilities and your rent and your taxes. You're going to have to gear up, you're going to need this grant money to ramp up for probably four to six weeks. That kind of money would be a go-between to get the business off the ground. And as a business owner, would, 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 it's going to be help. If, you know, some of these businesses is going to cost more than the $10,000. But I just trying to see, we have $300,000, what can we do to get the most businesses, you know, helped out? What can we do to get the most businesses, you know, helped out? And that's why I didn't want to just say $10,000. Up to $10,000, everybody gets $10,000. You only have 30 people. If there's a way to get more, or, you know, if you didn't, you know, if you gave $10,000 to somebody and he needed $14,000, because he has a bigger business, maybe he has 10 employees or something, and he does more volume and draws more people to our town, more sales tax dollars. And then he, and that just wasn't enough, and he did fail. It was a waste of the money. I'm just playing a little devil's advocate here on how business works. But I guess what I'm trying to say is, is there a way to interview these businesses or these applicants in a way to find out what their exact needs are? And $300,000 may not be enough. We may have to look for more money out of a pot to help even more. That's my only comment.
Mr. Dutton, if I, if I might interject here, I, I don't have a, the cap on it's purely a council decision as far as policy. What I would try to avoid is delaying the implementation of this. I believe that the goal was here to get small amounts of money and quick hits to businesses that needed to get started, the very small businessmen that really can't absorb any kind of loss at all. My theory is that if we push this thing out 60 days or so, we're going to miss that window. And some people that we might otherwise get back, we're not going to get back.
Well, I definitely don't want to push it out. The timeline we got is just to get it going. But I don't think it's, you know, to develop a way to find out what a business's needs are. We can make ideas and rules in an application to vet this, to vet this some way.
So what I would do then,
In this timeframe.
If that's your concern, what I would do then, if your colleagues agree, is raise the cap to 15, and we'll just vet them out on their actual needs. Also, to discourage people actually taking 15 if they don't need it, then what I would do is I'd make a forgivable amount and a smaller number. If they go past that smaller number, I'd make it a payback required in a certain amount of time, just so it keeps things honest. You know, my theory is like yours, I think, that if whatever number we strike, people are going to go right at that number. That's why we want to keep it at a smaller amount.
That's human nature.
Yeah. Right. Human nature. Correct.
But there's an idea that a grant is going to be forgivable. This is a grant form. The PPP was put in place as 75% for payroll was the forgivable grant portion, 25% was a 1% loan. Maybe we can do something like that if we can, I don't know if it's legally, that we can loan money.
Well, let me, let me look at that. I mean, I understand your concern. What I don't want to do is I don't want to push this process out. As a matter of fact, I'm going to be pushed on, Jim, to publicize this thing ahead of time, banking on approval at the next meetings, so we can start getting this. The money needs to be on the street in the next six weeks, I think, I mean, to be quite honest.
Or sooner, I think sooner. And then to give you an idea with the PPP, they just have, have some basic guidelines. And you, once you got it, you end in eight weeks, and then you're audited. Then they're going to find out what you did. That helped you. But then now, eight weeks have gone by. Now there's rules to, to go by. Maybe we can do something like that.
Well, may I interject? We actually, in the program guidelines, we're going to ask for receipts and proof of what they did as well. So the business owner needs to have that backup, and we're going to ask for that backup as well, so that if we're audited by HUD, we'll have that backup, and we won't have to track the applicant down for that information.
Correct. So what you're looking at is a threshold then for bigger grants than $10,000. And that's something we probably need to chew on and bring back at the next meeting, because I understand your point. It's well taken. And there may be businesses out there that require more, and I get it. And so what I think maybe we do is we'll set up a tiered system based on payroll or something. Jim, do you have any ideas on that?
Well, I like, I like the suggestion that something becomes a forgivable loan after a certain point, like they could get the $10,000 grant. And if they want an extra $5,000, that could be a forgivable loan over time. Something along those lines. We can talk to our consultant and see what has been done in other cities.
I think that's equitable, Mr. Dutton, if that, if that works for you.
Yeah. But I'm with you. You're reiterated on not holding it up. By all means, we can't hold this up. This needs to get done fast.
I mean, yeah, that's it. The whole point of this is a quick hit. I'm going to put, I'm going to put this thing on roller skates, get the money out as quickly as we can. That's just, yeah.
That was my only comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Dunn. Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very glad to see that there's some sort of business, business relief fund out there that's, that's available to use in this manner. I think a lot, a lot of the questions I had were addressed in the verbal presentation, because one thing noted as a, as a city eligibility requirement was in business more than six months. And that sort of led me to, well, I, I had another question related to that. Sometime when you rate the applications, Jim, Travis, is this, are you looking at like some kind of point system rating?
Yes, we're, yeah, we are. And we're, we're working through that process now. And we'll again look at what other cities are doing, what success. One good thing about having a good consultant on board is that they work from multiple cities. And they're able to see oftentimes what has worked and what hasn't in other places based on that experience. So we'll lean on them a little bit to see what is working in other communities that have done something similar. And we'll use that to try to weed out the applications and, and get priority, you know, the money in, in the right, I guess, the best hands possible in the fastest way possible.
Yes, thank you. Because I was looking at, trying to figure out again, you know, how the process will work. And then sometime, you know, how you're going to compare, you know, one business over another and thinking of potential tiebreakers kind of thing. And then let me think about the question of the time of operation. So might be worth considering the length of time the business has been in business. And that, you know, some of these long-term businesses are talking about not coming back or, and trying to hopefully get them to stay, stay in town. So just some of those thoughts. But again, I'm open to if, whatever formula can work to, you know, get somebody a little bit more if needed. So you guys can work on that. So let you guys take care of that and look forward to hearing more of the details on 26th. So, all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Raymond Hamada. Mayor Potem Kupps.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just thinking about, you know, there's a lot of businesses that have started to open, and they really shouldn't be. And I'm wondering, Jim or Jeff, do we have a list of those that aren't playing by the rules? And if so, could we exclude them from the process?
Yeah, that's a council policy call, and the answer is yes. I think we have a pretty good feel for who the bad actors have been. And if you want to exclude those who haven't followed the rules during this shutdown period, we could certainly include that in the guidelines.
I'm just throwing it on the table. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. But, you know, there's a lot of people that want to open, but they're adhering to the policies that have been set forward by the county and the state and the city. Others are just kind of thumbing our nose at us. And I don't think we should reward bad behavior.
Yeah, I don't necessarily disagree with you, but the short answer is we know who they are, and, and it's really a matter of policy call in the council if that's what they want to do.
Mr. Hamada brought up a good point in that there are rumblings of businesses that may or may not even reopen. Would we be able to find out who they are and try to give them a little more priority so that if they're on, leaning towards one way or another, that we can retain them?
The answer is, the answer to that is yes. The reason I, the reason this came up is because I've heard of a couple already. And what, if the council's heard of any, be sure to forward them to us. We'll reach out to them. But I know three or four, I'm going to reach out to immediately to let them know, hey, don't give up yet, guys. There's a little help coming here. And we're hoping to save them as well. And, you know, you guys probably have heard more than we have. And if you've got you in place, we'll reach out to them immediately as well.
You know, Ray was, Mr. Dutton was talking about, you know, how we could have needs for beyond $10,000, may go to 15. I'm looking at the other end of the spectrum, the small, small businesses that may only need $1,000 or $1,500. I'm thinking possibly the kiosk people or a little place like Uncle Bud's or that Cuban coffee shop on Boulevard Boulevard that hasn't been there very long. There should be a, a place that we are able to present that there's money for those small operations as well, because they are many, many times just owned by one person. And they haven't been open for six months, or I mean, six weeks or eight weeks. And a $1,500, $2,000 check might keep them in business and get their inventory back up again.
Well, my initial two thoughts on that are is that's exactly who we're kind of targeting with this. That was the whole point of developing this program, is exactly those kind of businesses. And ironically, you pointed out one of the businesses who may have violated the rules in the last part.
Right. So, you know, you know, so again, staff knows who is on the radar for these kinds of things. And whether or not they have, does it make a difference whether or not they've received city assistance in the past? Do they get another bite at the apple? Does that make a difference either? I think we have, you know, developments on the Boulevard. I know we've been very generous to some of the restaurants. I think about Jackie. I think about Marino's. But they're maybe hurting just as much as the others. Is there a judgment call made on that?
I would, I wouldn't want that judgment call made. I believe that they're all important, and especially those on the Boulevard that we've invested in. I certainly think they should remain eligible to take some of this money. Yes. I, from my perspective, I, that's, that would be my recommendation.
Would it be safe to just eliminate right off the bat any corporate businesses? I'm thinking like Walgreens or, or In-N-Out or anything that's part of a chain? Or is that not correct?
That's an interesting question. I don't have a ready answer. My inclination is that those businesses are certainly more able to compete for the PPP money that came out of Washington. What we were looking for was providing funding for those that probably fell through the gap. So Uncle Bud's is a prime example, or, or the kiosks, or anybody, two or three of those businesses, a steel craft, which are truly family-owned businesses. That seems to be the intent of this. My theory is if we open it up too broadly, the money's going to get chewed up quickly by more, you know, for lack of a better term, more organized folks, which may be corporate. And I don't think that's the intent of what we're trying to do here.
No, and that, I'm just throwing that on the table. Because, you know, we've got our 99 cent stores, we've got everybody. I'm not saying that they can't turn in an application, but I'm not whether, sure whether or not, how favorable we would look at it. I think that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
And you so much, Mayor Potem Kupps. Mr. Stewart, did you have a last comment there at the end?
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm sitting there, you know, you guys always ask these interesting questions. It makes me think about stuff I haven't thought about before. That's certainly one. Mike, you know, and I'm going to huddle with Jim and Travis tomorrow. They may want to chime in as well here. But my inclination is to exclude chains and national reps, because I think this is meant to be, since it's a pretty small amount of money, and I want it to be a small amount of money, to represent more of the homegrown businesses that try to establish themselves in Balfour and need help that wouldn't otherwise be available.
We will look at, we will look at that and check with our consultant to see, since these are federal funds, if we would be able to make exclusions like that.
Yeah.
That, that's might be one of the issues that we have.
And the answer, the question may be answered for us. I was just, you know.
No, I'm just throwing it on the table as we brainstorm, as we're in new place again. And, and you may be a corporate representative, and you're a franchisee, and you're hurting. You just got a corporate name on the store.
But I, I will tell you this. I will say this. If we, if we, if we roll this plan out and we end up with a, a, a series of corporate businesses that pull out $15,000 max and chew up the money, and the mom and pops get squeezed out, I think that sort of defeats the purpose of what we're trying to do here.
No, and that's what I was trying to imply. And then I'm also concerned for, we've got guys in transition, like the guy that's building a restaurant in Cafe Camilla, The Nest. Now, now he may, does he even, he may not qualify. He may not even have a business license yet, because he isn't operating.
We had discussed the threshold of being in business for six months. So, yeah, he wouldn't qualify.
Because you got to have an active business license, correct?
Correct. Correct. And one of the things that, that has been a discussion internally with staff about something like that. And the plan was for The Nest Tembien. They were looking at applying for the city's business assistance program at some point for, for potential sign assistance or to do something with the facade. So that's still on their radar to do that, since they haven't opened yet and haven't been in business. But he also has his regular store on Alondra that would be eligible for this.
Okay. And also, I'm thinking about the comedy club, which obviously, that's like the never-ending build over there.
Yeah, no.
He's, he's going to be okay at this point. I see him on a weekly basis, and, and he's, he won't be able to open as soon as he'd like. But it'll give him time to test things out and be ready to open when he can. So he's, he's going along well.
Okay. But, you know, we'll look at them piece by piece. And maybe I'm being too discriminatory on excluding chain stores, but I just feel as though they're, as mentioned before, they have the wherewithal to withstand this better than mom and pops. And I really would like to make some inquiries as to those that are considering not to reopen. And if they just have a little money behind them, would pull the trigger to start again. Thank you.
That is the game plan.
Great. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor Potem Kupps. And in terms of me, I, I wanted to share in with the council member Santez said early on that I also looked at the timeframe of the application period. I was really concerned about, it was really, really, really tight, I thought. So I, to the city manager's recommendation, I'd like to see if, if after this meeting, this starts being marketed so that it'll give people enough of a headway to be able to start preparing for this. I'm not sure how comprehensive and intensive the application itself will be, but I think five days to turn something like that around would be really, really, really ambitious. And then I also had questions regarding the marketing and promotion of this program. I just wanted to, just a friendly reminder to staff that not every business is signed up to e-citizen or is a member of the chamber. And so I'm hoping to see that if there's other ways that we can market this aside from those. I'm not sure if maybe going off of the addresses of the businesses that have a valid business license, with our city would be another appropriate avenue to be able to promote this, sending, you know, sending off a letter to them in anticipation that this council will consider this at our next council meeting. I just, I'm afraid that we may have some businesses that qualify for this that may fall through the cracks. And as we said, I think we're, we're trying to capture as many of them in our, in our safety net as, as much as possible. Especially we can get some of the smaller denominations that were shared before. We may be able to get a lot more businesses and see we'll still be able to stay within that, that amount that we're budgeted for this. So again, I'd just like to see a little bit more of an expansion and timeframe for the marketing of this program. And then, and then to be really clear in terms of the documentation that's going to be required of businesses. Mr. Delalanga, my question to you is, on page two of the city eligibility requirements, we have an idea on the first two bullet points of small businesses that are brick and mortar and small businesses that have 25 or fewer employees. Do we have any type of ideas of how many businesses in our city would qualify under those two parameters? I'm not, I'm trying to get an idea as to how many we have.
No, not really. We, we know we have, I think, 3,000 to 4,000 businesses in the city from our business license list. And, but those parameters, it's, it's hard to gauge how many we have based on those parameters. But we, we've been targeting, as some of the other council members mentioned, the smaller mom and pops. So that's why we've been, we looked at a number of employees as one of the parameters.
Okay. Yeah. And again, I think traditionally, just the type of business that is really expensive in our city. You know, I like that, that focus, like Mayor Potem Kupps said. I think there's other types of avenues to support our larger type of businesses, corporate. I think for, for our city, I think that's really appropriate. I just, I wanted to see if we had an idea. So no problem on that. I think the only thing I would ask, and you guys, you meaning Mr. Delalanga and Mr. Sias can correct me on this, but. But in terms of eligibility requirements, I would, I would ask that if we can ask the applicants to, to demonstrate that they have a valid business, an updated business license with our city. And because I'm not sure how many of those fall through the cracks and maybe operating in our city that don't have a valid, valid business license. And, and I think to qualify for this funding, I think they should. And then lastly is, again, I'm not sure if this goes against the rules for CDBG funding in this. But I think it would be a value for, for you as, as, as the staff that's going to be vetting this along with a member of our economic development subcommittee to, for the applicants to share if they've received any other type of, of business assistance during COVID-19. And that may be able to influence, you know, if somebody has merit on this or not. I think the assumption right now is that they probably haven't gotten it. But I think until we ask, we don't know. And we may find some businesses that probably have had business assistance. And maybe there's some others that may be merit a little more if they haven't. So those would be my recommendations and my requests. But with that, I am, I'm not sure if there's any other further questions or comments from the council before I go to public comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, can I just make additional comments?
Yes, please, sir.
Yeah. Regarding the, the limit on number of employees, and I'm glad that the staff is looking into this. They must have twenty-five or fewer employees. But if we're looking at corporate multi, multi-store, maybe one way to look at it is the number of employees in the corporate, including all other stores. So that may, that may exclude them. So that's something to look into, not just when they're operating Bellflower. The second thing is, I've been a bit clear already in terms of direction as far as the cap. Are we increasing the cap to fifteen thousand dollars or are we sticking with ten?
I think we, go ahead, Jeff. That's a policy call to the council.
Well, my recommendation is to stick with ten in the first round.
Yes.
And because we don't know how many applicants we're going to be getting. Because my, my, I'm of the opinion that I want to help more businesses with less money. Okay, so if the cap is only two hundred thousand dollars that we can afford, I'd rather help thirty businesses with ten thousand dollars or less. Or thirty-five businesses with less money. And then at the same time, I'd like staff to look into additional funding. And I like the idea from Councilmember Dutton to provide some kind of forgivable loan. So if we can find additional funding for that, that may be in round two. So what I'm trying to say is we need to get this out, this money right away, because that's when it's needed. And then if they need additional funding, they might apply for a round two, additional forgivable loan, maybe sometime after this first round. So that's my, my suggestion.
Interesting that you say that, Councilmember Santenaz, because we are awaiting guidance from HUD regarding the infusion of CDBG funds that we were given, the COVID CDBG funds that you guys may have heard about. It's approximately five hundred thousand dollars and change. But we haven't received full guidance on what the restrictions are going to be for those to hand that fund out, especially for business assistance programs. So we're waiting for that type of guidance so that we know when we're accepting applications, what questions to ask, and how to vet the potential applicants for the COVID funding versus the regular CDBG funding that we are bringing to you tonight. So once that guidance comes out, which should have been out already, but it's taking longer than anticipated, we'll know more and we'll be able to bring that program back to you as well and use the current program as a basis to potentially expand it with the, the COVID funding that we're getting, that we've gotten from CDBG.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Santenaz?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Councilmember Santenaz. Councilmember Dutton, are you okay with the proposal by Councilmember Santenaz to cap it at ten?
Yeah, that's fine. It wasn't something that I would, I just wanted to make the comment that people that, if you're going to have up to ten, everybody's going to get ten. There may be people that need three thousand, five thousand, seven thousand, and there may be people that need more. That was just making the comment, but we don't want to hold this up. Let's just go with what we got.
Not a problem, sir. I just, just again, just for, out of respect, so.
Yeah, no, thank you.
All concurrent, so, okay. So any other comments from my council colleagues before we go to public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
One last thing, Mr. Mayor. If we can develop an application that is user-friendly. I mean, the business owners that we're dealing with, many will walk off if they just, if it's a very intense application. So, you know, less is more sometimes. Just keep that in mind.
Yes, we're going to work to do that. We'll, we will be required to have some, some questions in there and some backup based on the CDBG regs. But we, that's our goal, is to make it as easy as possible.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Potem Koops. Councilmember Hamada?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just quickly, just thinking about definitions and what qualifies. Would a nonprofit qualify? Is that considered in the category of the small business?
At this point, nonprofits are, would not qualify. Now, that's, again, that's a policy decision, but we did not have that as part of the program.
All right. Just wanted to be sure what, all right, thank you.
Are you making a request, Mr. Hamada?
I know there's a lot more businesses in need that I think that have been waiting long. Others, some of the nonprofits have been operating. So I'm trying to, I think I'm going to focus on those who've been kind of waiting, waiting it out. And hopefully are going to plan on coming back and with, with an injection of, of some money, they, it might make that, make that call easier. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe around two. Okay, great. So, okay, great. Thank you, staff. Thank you, colleagues in the council. So now let's go ahead and open it up for public comments on item twelve B. Madam Deputy City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, I'll give the public just a moment to utilize the raise hand feature on their screen. I see that Mr. Wehage would like to present public comments.
Great.
Mr. Wehage, I'm going to unmute you. And once I start the timer on the screen, you can begin.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, Mr. Wehage, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you very much. My concern is you've got approximately thirty small businesses that might be able to utilize these funds, possibly more. But the people that get, that don't qualify because they were late, because they were forty-sixth in line. How are we going to explain to them that we were fair in this endeavor? That's my question.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wehage. And so let's go ahead and pause the clock. Thank you. So, Mr. Dela Longa.
We're going to work with our consultant and the city attorney to make sure we have an objective set of criteria. And that these applications are received and tracked as they are received. So that they're, they come in and we timestamp them, whether they come in by mail or if they come in via the internet, there'll be some type of timestamp that shows when they've arrived. So that if somebody has a question, they can see when the, when it arrived. And they can also then also see how they were rated and based on the objective criteria that we're, we, some of them we showed you tonight. And if we have more, we'll work together as a team to come up with the best subjective criteria that we can and have a, a, a committee. I think we, I don't know if I put it in the staff report. I think I did. We're looking at staff rating as well as having one member of the Economic Development Subcommittee of the Council help rate these applications so that there is full, as much objectivity as possible when they are rated.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dela Longa. Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any other members of the public wishing to make comments this evening?
Yes. Next is Fred Taylor. And Mr. Taylor, I will unmute you now. And once the clerk starts, the clock starts on the screen, you can go ahead and begin.
Thank, thank you very much. My question has to do with the applications as well as after the money has been spent by the recipient. Will there be any requirement for before and after photos showing what the money was spent on? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Dela Longa?
Sure. As part of the program, we will confirm that what is, as it's going through, we'll confirm that the money is being spent on what was put in the application through receipts and paid invoices. We can add photographs to it as backup, but we'll do what HUD requires at this point. Is that, is having the backup receipts and invoices showing that the money was spent on what they were approved to spend it on. If not, they would be required to pay it back.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dela Longa. Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any other members of the public wishing to make a comment regarding item twelve B?
Yes, Victor Sanchez is next.
Great. Thank you so much.
Just one moment, Victor.
No worries, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you. Hi, good evening again. First off, I, I want to say that I definitely agree with supporting the local small businesses first. I'm fortunate enough to be a part of a nonprofit that's considered an essential service provider. And my one thought, though, on the nonprofit sector would be that there are some nonprofits out there who may not have been or are not as fortunate to have continued operations. So I don't know if that's somewhere, there could be some leeway for those nonprofits. I don't know of any off the top of my head. But I would just maybe have that in consideration as well. Because there may be nonprofits who have not been fortunate enough to continue to operate during this pandemic. That, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sanchez. Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any other members of the public wishing to make a comment?
Let me just check one more time. Mayor, I don't see anyone else wishing to present public comment.
Thank you so much, Madam Deputy City Clerk. Okay. Council colleagues, any final questions, comments regarding item twelve B?
Mr. Mayor, could I, Larry, are you still on the line, Mr. Wehage? Can you unmute him?
He, he is ready, Dan.
Mr. Wehage, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Good. So, you know, you being the president of the chamber and all, you have insights beyond what the city has. And I think it appropriate for you to give your insights to Jim Dela Longa. Remember, I mentioned earlier about those businesses in Bellflower who are trying to figure out whether or not they're going to come back or not. And I think you have insights on that, that we may not enjoy. And I would be appropriate for you to share those viewpoints. They may not even be paying their dues anymore, indicating they're not coming back. But we certainly want to make sure that we can help those that are hurting or on hospice.
I would be especially interested in places like Uncle Bud's. That was around in seventy-two when I first moved to Bellflower my first time. In fact, the owner lives right down the street from me and from Karen Avery. I'm going to talk to her. And if she's hurting for money, I've got a checkbook that's got a check for her.
Okay, well, that's great. I worry about them on social distancing based on the capacity over there.
Yes, indeed.
All right, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Potem Koops. And again, just a respectful reminder that I know there's going to be some criteria established. Obviously, Mr. Wehage's position is, with our chamber is valued. But just a friendly reminder on the eligibility criteria regarding this as well. So with that, any other final questions or comments from my council colleagues regarding item twelve B? All right, so hearing none, is there a motion regarding item twelve B?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion.
Please proceed, sir.
I'd like to make a motion for the city council of Bellflower to direct the city manager to create and implement a small business assistance, assistance program funded by CDBG in a form consistent with CDBG regulations and approved by the city attorney and as, based on our discussion at tonight's meeting.
Great. So I have a motion from Councilmember Santenaz. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Koops.
Okay. So I think the second came in from Councilmember Hamada, just in a split sec. So I have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Koops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye. Thank you so much. Councilmembers, let's move on to item number thirteen, consent calendar. Are there any items that the members of the city council wish to be polled for separate discussion or consideration?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I think staff would like to pull item B for separate consideration. I think the nature of this is, given our quapper of efforts to work with the county on resolving the Operation Room Key situation, rather than feeling like this is a poke in the eye, I would like to move this back to schedule a second, a second reading date. But I'm suggesting June twenty-second right now unless the council comes up an alternative date. So I'd like to consider that separately and move it back to a date certain in the future. And I'd recommend June twenty-two.
Okay, so, so we'll, we'll do that for separate consideration then. Is there any other items that any council members wish to be polled? Hearing none, are there any recusers or conflicts regarding any item in the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, this is Mayor Potem Koops, thirteen D. I will, I'm conflicted out because of that property nearby the project.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Mayor Potem Koops. So why don't we take up the consent calendar complete, aside from item thirteen B, which we'll take on separate consideration? So item thirteen A and thirteen C, all the way through thirteen H is before you. Is there a, is there a motion to approve?
Move the consent calendar, Koops.
Yes, I have a motion by Councilmember, Mayor Potem Koops. So do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hamada. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Koops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye. Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. And item thirteen B, I know Mr. Stewart made comments before. Is there anything further, Mr. Koops? I mean, Mr. Stewart, that you would like to share regarding item thirteen B?
No, I think that this is an item that, independent of what's been taken, undertaken or not undertaken by the county, would be good to have on the books. But yet I don't want it to appear to the county that we're trying to show them up in any way, shape or form. But I, and I would like to push this out to a date certain, but not go too far out. But far enough where it's respectful. And like I said, I'm recommending the twenty-second of June as the item. The, the date certain, I'd like to read this back in the record.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Stewart. I personally don't have an issue with, with postponing this and doing it to a date certain. I, I just think that with Project Room Key being, it'll probably be around the time that it ends. I am hoping to push it back a little further. I was thinking that maybe sometime in August.
That's fine. No, no objection on this. That's fine as well.
Yeah. So would you be okay, Mr. Stewart? I'm looking at the calendar right now. I think like August twenty-four, I think that's our next, this last council meeting in August.
That's totally appropriate. That's fine.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions from my colleagues on the city council regarding postponing item thirteen B to the date of August twenty-four for consideration? All right. So hearing none, I will make a motion to that effect.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. So I have a motion by myself in a second by Mayor Potem Koops. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Koops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye. Thank you so much, uh, Madam City Clerk. So with that, let's move on to a council report, item number fourteen. Let's start off with Councilmember Santiness.
Do I need to excuse myself on thirteen B?
I, oh, no. I thought he already did, right?
He already did. All right, so I'm cool. I, I thought maybe I had to get off the line.
Didn't know you were on.
Yeah, you, I think you, you were not conflicted on that one, Mayor Proton, so.
No, but on thirteen D I was. And you guys?
I thought when we approved it, uh, City Clerk, I thought we did it with the, uh, capturing the fact that he was conflicting himself out of that item?
Yes, that's correct, and, uh.
All right, good. I just want to keep, I was gonna go hide under the bed again if I was wrong.
No, so, nobody, nobody pulled it for separate consideration. You're good, you're solid.
All right, I'll come out from under the bed now.
Okay, uh, so item fourteen, Councilmember Santiness, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things to report. Um, on April thirty, participated in a conference call with Congressman Lucille Roybell-Allard. And basically, it was a call regarding small business, and, um, they are working hard in, um, in Congress to find more funding for small businesses, so, um, uh, take a look at that later on and hopefully something will come out, come out of it. On May fifth, I participated in a food distribution at St. Bernard's Parish. Uh, it was a lot of people who came and it was very interesting to see who's coming. So, uh, there's about four hundred, four hundred meals that were distributed. On, uh, May seventh, I attended, uh, the, uh, meeting of the Southern California Association of Governments where the Connect SoCal, uh, proposal was approved, although it was delayed for a hundred and twenty days. So the RENA, the Regional Housing Need Assessment, um, determination is delayed for one and twenty days maximum. Hopefully, uh, within sixty days, a final report can be made. So that was voted in. And, um, and I forgot, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. Hopefully, you had a great day yesterday. And on a side note, I just received word that, um, one of our long-term residents, Kathy Walinga, uh, fell yesterday from her scooter. She was celebrating Mother's Day, and for whatever reason, she fell off her scooter. And, um, she's in a hospital and really in bad shape, so, uh, please include her in our, in your prayers. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Santiness. Mayor Proton Coops?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you, one of the things that I did this weekend was took a ride through our new parking structure. It's finished, it looks good, it was open. I mean, it is a wonderful addition to our city. All painted walls, all beautiful light fixtures, places to charge your electric car. Go to the top, you have a view of the whole city. Um, just really an outstanding structure that, uh, the city's gonna have a lot of use for, but if any of my council colleagues haven't taken that drive, i- it's really cool. And, uh, I can see that structure being more useful than just for cars. We're gonna be able to do some neat things with that building. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Proton Coops. I have not seen it, so I'm excited. Um, let's see, uh, Councilmember Dutton?
I don't got much to say, other than my wife's been a really good cook and, uh, and, uh, my girth is getting a little bigger. And, uh, I can't wait to get out more. With that, and I'm sure every resident in town agrees with me. And, uh, with that, I'm gonna say good night.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Dutton. I think, uh, many of us would have been able to, uh, empathize with that. Uh, Councilmember Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just wanted to report, uh, as what Sunny mentioned, uh, that the regional board took action on the Connect SoCal. I, I participate in the Transportation Committee a, a few hours before that. And, uh, we had recommended to the regional board, uh, to, uh, take action on it. Uh, wanted to, again, shout out to the Los Ritos YMCA. Again, uh, they started their eighth week of, uh, you know, distributing food over, over at the Bellflower High School Nutrition Center. Twenty-six hundred meals daily, so it, uh, again, met the numbers again this, this morning and, uh, looks like, uh, they plan to at least do it maybe a couple more weeks prior to, uh, school on the calendar. Finishing up, so, and that's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hamada. Um, thanks for sharing that. It's, uh, the food insecurity that's growing in our community. I fear it's gonna get worse, so, um, and let's see, so for myself, I do have quite a bit of items to share, so I do apologize in advance, but first of all, as, uh, Councilmember Santiness said, Happy Mother's Day to the mothers in our community. Um, I do not tire of saying repeatedly that, that, I, mothers make the world go around, so, again, thank you. Um, and, uh, I have an update for everyone regarding a project that, uh, we have not heard from in a little while, which is a West Annana branch. Um, on April twenty-ninth, I received a call from Metro Staff just providing me an update regarding the project. It's still full schedule, it's still, um, ready to go. Uh, they're addressing the items with fifty-three. And, um, right now, it's scheduled for the EIR to be released later this year in the fall. Um, and right now, there's, there's forecasting, they have some issues, uh, to clarify still with the, um, with, uh, some rails regarding the co-use of the line, but, uh, it looks like those things are gonna be ironed out and, uh, they're still looking at breaking ground on that thing here within the next couple of years. And still finishing up by twenty-twenty-eight, so, uh, that is good news for our city of Bellflower. Um, in terms of New Hope, um, uh, Mayor Proton Coops and, uh, staff led by, uh, Mr. Hockman and myself had a meeting on April twenty-eighth at New Hope at the shelter. Um, it, it was absolutely emptier than it is now. And I know that Kingdom Causes was in the meeting as well, as well as, uh, members of the local community. Uh, and it was a great meeting, and again, I think it just goes to, um, solidify the relationship with that the city has with the local residents there, and the communication is going back and forth. And, uh, a special thanks to Councilmember Dutton for making that recommendation on the ad hoc after he received that public comment when we had our meeting back in, in December. So, um, and then related to New Hope, um, we, I also, uh, have had a couple of tours, and I want to thank, uh, Ms. Randy Stover for opening up the facility on New Hope. Uh, uh, we've conducted a tour for Michelle Martinez, who's a special master for, uh, Judge Carter and as well as to the plaintiff's attorney, Brooke Weitzman, which happened today. Um, I think they were both really, uh, pleasantly surprised at the quality of New Hope. And I think they're both looking forward to seeing what, uh, what the end product is. I know that we have some challenges coming up with regard to COVID nineteen at the facility. Uh, but I have every confidence I will be able to mitigate those effects, um, as this facility gets up and running next week. And then with that, on the, on May seventh, uh, I was interviewed by a Kirk LA. It's a, um, newspaper, an online newspaper in, in, that's based in LA, and I think with all the settlement talks that are going on between the city of LA and the county of LA that involved Judge Carter, I think they were really interested in terms of the background on the settlement that we in Bellflower had, um, that was published, and, uh, it's gotten a good amount of, of, uh, publicity. And I know that I've had a couple members of, uh, the council in LA call me regarding that, so that's, that's always good, um, and especially seeing that our city is setting a path in the way with regards to, um, uh, addressing the homelessness, uh, challenge that we all have here in our region. And then lately, I have had some Zoom meetings with, uh, Assemblymember Garcia, Senator Gonzalez from Long Beach, as well as Senator Archuleta that represents us. Um, and those meetings have been lately regarding the fiscal situation. I don't think it's a secret that, as you heard this tonight, uh, we have our businesses and our residents that are, uh, being challenged where the effects of COVID nineteen. Uh, the city is not immune to that, and so they have reached out to, like, it's like myself, to be able to assess and get a, uh, a temperature or pulse on, uh, the effects that COVID nineteen is having not only to our fiscal situation in our cities, but as well as our community, so I, I did, uh, absolutely share that with them, but I kept impressing upon each one of those meetings, um, including the speaker today as well. Uh, Speaker of the Assembly is the fact that, uh, we are early in this process unfortunately, and I think, uh, that as time goes on, um, I hope and I'm praying that, uh, that the effect won't be as, as, uh, as devastating as been predicted, but, um, again, we'll stay tuned on that, and I will, uh, I, and I know that my colleagues will keep them apprised of our situation as we continue forward on this. Um, they did ask me, each one of them asked me, especially the speaker today, for us to reach out to our congressional representatives as, as our Congress in Washington DC is considering potentially a stimulus package to support state and local governments, and that's gonna be crucial, so, uh, they did ask for that support from us, so um, I'm hoping that, that staff will assist in drafting a letter, uh, for us to be able to send to our congressional representatives, um, following up on that request. And then, I, I wanted to thank our community for their patience. I know that the amount of, of sacrifice that we've all been asked with COVID nineteen is unprecedented. Um, none of us, I think, have ever been through something like this. And so I know you've done great in being able to maintain, um, those safeguards that our public health professionals have been asking of us. Um, and you've done great for two months, and, uh, all I ask, all we ask, I think, is just continue to, uh, to enforce those as much as possible. Um, spring is here, and I know we all want to get out, and get out, please. It's, it's good for mental health, being Mental Health Awareness Month, but uh, do it within those restrictions, please. So again, thank you for your patience. Um, and then just a comment that, you know, our, our monetary fiscal situation is fluid. Um, I know that staff will be coming to us shortly with a, a good picture in terms of where our city stands from a fiscal perspective. Um, and so we'll await at that moment and see how we are, but what I want to, I think, echo from what Mayor Proton Coops said earlier is that, um, we do have some legacy projects that are still ongoing. I think if our residents see the amount of activity that's taking place in our city right now, um, I think we've shown that we haven't stopped. Things continue to move forward, they need to move forward, and I'm hoping that our residents see these projects, the repavings that are going on throughout our city, the, uh, the issues to address drainage issues over on, on, uh, on Artigia Boulevard as well. Just to name a couple examples, to show that our city is moving forward, and our parking structure, I think, is one of those, those legacy projects that is, uh, a reflection of that, so I myself can't wait to go see it, so I hope that the community sees that we still are moving forward and that we have a bright future as Bellflower. And then last but not least, um, this evening, I would like to, uh, adjourn our meeting in the memory of, uh, Jim Edwards. Um, so Jim Edwards, City of Cerritos Councilmember and former mayor, passed away over the weekend at the age of seventy-five. He had thirty years of extensive public service. Jim served as mayor between two thousand eight and two thousand nine, and between twenty-twelve to twenty-thirteen, and was a council member at the time of his death. Jim previously served as Cerritos Parks and Recreation Commissioner from nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety-seven, and from two thousand three, two thousand three to two thousand five, and as a Cerritos Community Safety Committee member from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand three. He served on the Board of Directors of the Friends of Arts Education at the Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, including one term as president. Jim had a career as a teacher and administrator in the ABC Unified School District. He served four years at Whitney Community Learning Center and thirty years at Richard Guard High School. He was also a part-time instructor at Cerritos College and served for ten years as a director of Cerritos College Summer Sports Camp. He received his bachelor's degree, Bachelor's of Arts degree in physical education from Whiter College, where he also was awarded a standard secondary teaching credential. He received a master's degree in educational technology from National University. Jim was active in the Cerritos Optimist Club, the Vietnam Veterans Association, and the Friends of the First Combat Engineer Battalion Adoption Committee. He was also a volunteer photographer for the Los Angeles County Fire Department. His photography assignments for the department included photographing fires, rescues, training events and special events, as well as graduation ceremonies. He survived by his wife Connie, their son and daughter, six grandchildren, and one great-grandson. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to our sister city of Cerritos and to the entire Edwards family. He is truly a huge loss for our region, and I will miss him greatly. So, uh, with that, I will adjourn this meeting to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at five-thirty PM on Tuesday, May twenty-six, twenty-twenty, due to the Memorial Day holiday. It is five twenty-one by my watch, and this meeting is adjourned.